The March 21st, 2023, meeting of the Carleton School District Board of Directors is called to order. To do the pledge tonight, we have a student that scored 1,000 points in his whole career.
1,006.
1,006 points. So, Mr. McClure, would you mind leading us in the pledge tonight?
(laughter)
(inaudible)
(laughter)
(inaudible)
(laughter)
(inaudible)
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 Thank you. Will the secretary please call a vote?
Director O'Leana?
Here.
Director Zlowski?
Here.
Director Simsek?
Here.
Director Postcar?
Here.
Director O'Brien? She's unable to be here tonight. Director Honchar? Here. Director Frank? He is unable to be here tonight. Director Apple? Here. Director Schreiber? Here. At the beginning of each meeting, we invite the public to comment or ask questions about any items that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anybody in the public have questions or comments about an agenda item tonight? If not, we'll move forward. Under Section 2, we have minutes from previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the voting meeting of February 21st, 2023, and then two minutes from the committee meeting for March 7th, 2023. I've got a motion for those two items. Move them second. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, litigation, student matters, and informational items. I now turn to Dr. Kreider for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Director Schreiber. For the superintendent's report, Carleton High School proudly presents Disney's Little Mermaid. And you may ask, what happens when a young mermaid finds love with a human prince? You may ask. Ariel longs to live on land, but her friends try to convince her that life is better under the sea. That little tune comes to mind. Ariel's father, King Triton, tries to control her with the rules, but isn't ready to give up on love. How far she will go to become the part of the world. Community members, families, friends are all welcome to join us. We have shows that are starting next Thursday night, March 31st. Those are the 7:00 PM shows. It's the 31st, and then also April 1st and 2nd, 7 o'clock. It's here in our auditorium. And then they have a 2:00 performance on April 2nd. That's on a Sunday. If you visit our website, there's online purchasing for tickets, and you can also pick your own seats. Tickets there are for students 18 and under, $10 a ticket, and $15 for adults. And again, visit our website to purchase tickets. It's going to be a great show, talking to the kids. They're excited, and it's always a great opportunity to come out and see our kids perform. Kindergarten registration is now open. We ask all families who have children at kindergarten age to register their children before May 1st. That will put them on a distribution list to receive information about kindergarten registration. The district is also pleased to announce the Smile Program, the Mobile Dentist. This program is designed for any individual. Just a reminder that students in grades 3, 7, and also kindergarten are required to have dental exams on file with the district. But the Smile Program provides it as a free service. Those who are enrolled in the CHIP program or also in medical assistance programs, it's free of charge, and students naturally are welcome to use their own dental provider as well to get their dental reports. Tonight's agendas, there are, there's two motions related to the school calendar. We have the upcoming PSSAs that are done in grades 3 through 8 at the elementary and secondary level. Those tests are given on April 24th, 25th, and 26th. That's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Then the following week, on May 1st, May 2nd, that's Monday and Tuesday. Due to the number of accommodations, small group testing, read-aloud types of accommodations that we give across the board for students in grades 3 through 8, requires us to use a large number of our staff. And for that reason, we operate on a 2 and 1/2 hour delay during those days. So, students who are in those grades 3 through 8, they'll report to school at regular time. Buses will run a couple continuous laps to pick up our kids. So, grades 3 through 8, they'll report at regular time. Students in K through 2 and students in 9 through 12 will have that 2 and 1/2 hour delay start. We'll push some information out, but basically if your bus normally shows up at 7 o'clock in the morning, it'll show up at 9:30. You can do the math on any other time your bus normally shows up, just add 2 and 1/2 hours to it, and then that's when buses will come for transportation. The other item that is related to the school calendar is for May 16th, which is the primary elections. In the past, in our most recent board meeting, we had a discussion about the challenges that it creates to run both a polling location and have students in the schoolhouse at the same time. Last year, we experienced issues regardless of how much security we put in place. There are people that enter into the schoolhouse, in some cases have come into some classrooms or looking for bathrooms with no malicious intent, but nonetheless, our priority is making sure that we create a safe school environment for all of our staff and students. So, for that reason, tentatively as of now, we have a motion. I'll ask Director Schreiber to change the motion slightly to add the two words, if necessary, at the end of that motion. I was able to have a conversation this morning with James Hughes from Allegheny County Courts, Division of Elections. Also spoke recently with Representative Dan Deasy. Representative Deasy's office sent a letter to Allegheny County Courts, the Division of Elections, to make the request that they change the polling location out of Crafton. And what we're looking at is for that to be a permanent change, again, so that our students can report to school in a safe manner. My conversation with Mr. Hughes this morning, I thought, was very positive. He did express an interest that he's looking to change the location as quickly as this May for the primaries, and then looking to permanently move it out of Crafton, which will be very helpful for us. If we can't get that moved, what we'll do is we'll have a FID day on that day just for students at Crafton, high school kids who still have to come to school, but students at Crafton will work on a FID day. I'm hopeful to get information back from Mr. Hughes sometime this week or next, and then we'll share that information out when it becomes official. So, a lot of thanks to Mr. Hughes for his diligence, and then also for Representative Deasy for having a genuine care and concern for safety of our kids. And finally, tonight, we have a group of students with us tonight who, I feel, have exemplified all the characteristics of community excellence and character. We have our boys' basketball team, along with Coach Trembetta is here with us as well. We also have our cheerleaders. This year, the boys finished with an overall season record of 19 and 8. They placed 3rd in the Whipple, and also moved on to the quarterfinals of the PIAA state championship, which was pretty awesome. Recognized with community excellence and character, what really stands out to me about this group of kids and scholar athletes is their commitment, their teamwork, and their sportsmanship. One thing that I've seen, you know, as early as 6 o'clock in the morning, these guys are showing up in the gymnasium, shooting hoops. Coach Trembetta is also out there shooting hoops with them as well, but setting things up, I think, over the course of the last several months, just your approach to the game, the attitude that I think you have both on the court and off the court is just that passion for achieving the best that you can do, and as far as a group, I've never seen any of you quit. You've always been out there playing from buzzer to buzzer, going at it at full force. On the other side, we have our ladies, who have, they've been there throughout, not just to support the basketball players, but just on a continuous type of basis. Just your enthusiasm that you bring to the court, your ability to raise that community interest, that school spirit that you bring to the schoolhouse as well, is something that I think is exemplary also. So, we're very pleased to have both these groups of students here with us tonight. I think they represent Carleton in an extremely positive manner, and for that, we have certificates for you. I did want to pass things off to Coach Trembetta, and then also over to Coach Cal just to say a few words, and then we can hand out certificates. So, Coach.
I would say to you guys, the last time I was here, they asked me for a little bit of help, so kind of just to reiterate what Dr. Kreider said, yeah, these boys, they exemplify what we guys want in our school district. Their story's a little unique. The seniors here have been playing together since 4th grade. I've had the privilege to watch them from 4th grade on. My nephews have been playing, and I've had... Sorry, guys.
Shows you like a father to a teenager.
But I had the honor to coach them last three years, so it's just been a great experience. And like I said, what these boys have done has been really impressive, and they set the bar really high. Just watching them over the years, playing hard, learning, it's what high school sports should be about, right? Being leaders in the classroom, being leaders in the hallway, being leaders in the gym. That doesn't go without saying that we didn't have our issues, them being late for some home rooms, being late for some practices. And that's the other side of this, what athletics is about, learning lessons, and learning how to compete, learning how to beat your spot taking, learning how to win, learning how to lose. All of those things these boys have done together for the last eight years, and they've done extremely well. I'm extremely proud of them, and like I said, they've set the bar really high. If we could have a class like this come through our building year after year, we're going to have something special. So, it was my honor and privilege to coach these guys, and I'm going to miss them. Love you guys.
Coach Cal, anything to say about your ladies?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm proud of them. It's, you know, it's hard to be this dedicated. It's cheerleading, cheer around. You know, they start in the summer, they have cheer camp, then they have the cheer for football, then they have the cheer for basketball. They just got done, and now tryouts during a couple weeks. I mean, it's all around. So, to find a group of students that will stay dedicated and do it, and, you know, balance school and work, some of you, and it's amazing. And, you know, they come from all walks of life, so to see them learn how to work together and do some things, it's pretty great. And I'll miss all of them. This is my last year. Thank you, guys.
And for the adults in the room, the coaches included, as a former coach, I know you guys, you do, you made a lot of sacrifices in your life just for the benefit of our kids. You don't see your own family as much as you see this family here, and parents as well. You've made a lot of sacrifices over the years, taking your kids back and forth through events and being there for them when things don't always go their way, out in the field and the court and so on. So, having a good, strong family base is extremely important, so we thank each and every one of the parents as well. We did want to get quick pictures, so if we could get the boys up here first, if you guys can just stand up here in front of the board, then we can get a few chicks. Tall guys in the back, that's everybody.
She just came from basketball.
(laughter)
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 Of active kids in March of that year. We had fifty-one students throughout the entire district. Then in eighteen nineteen, it went to ninety-four students. Nineteen twenty, ninety-one. Twenty twenty-one, it went to ninety-two. Then in twenty-one, twenty-two, it went to over a hundred and three. And currently today, we have a hundred and seventeen students that are actively receiving English as a second language services. So what does that mean? Well, I broke it down a little bit further. And on the next page, you're gonna see an orange bar graph and a blue one. And again, it starts at seventeen eighteen, all the way through to this year. Again, these are active students, just a snapshot of that, uh, of March during those years. Uh, our largest populations seem to be at Carnegie Elementary, that's the trend. Currently, we have sixty-nine students at Carnegie receiving services and forty-eight at the high school. And this has increased since the seventeen eighteen school year, which we only had sixteen students here at the high school and thirty-five at the elementary. So again, those numbers are doubling and tripling. So what does that mean? We're gonna have to add additional supports and staff, which we have done.
This is often quick question. The elementary population all is serviced at Carnegie, is that correct?
Yes, that's what I was gonna get into. Okay, no. Um, so again, we're trying to, um, be efficient with our services and our delivery. So we don't have some over at Carnegie, some over at Crafton. With that being said, I'll get into that, but all of our services are housed out of Carnegie. So families can live in Crafton and they get transported over to Carnegie for those services.
I have a question. So, so they're considered, or they considered English language learners until they hit a certain proficiency?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, absolutely. They come in, part of the screening process, they do, um, families do, uh, if they answer a whole language, or a whole language survey. And then that gets sent to the IU and they indicate on there if they speak another language other than English in the household. And that doesn't automatically mean that they're gonna get those services. It just says, hey, sometimes you have a bilingual household, families speak multiple languages. Um, but we then pass it along to the IU and the intermediate unit comes up and they screen the kid. Um, some kids qualify, some don't. We also have students moving into the district from other schools locally as well.
So I have a question. Is it in the first year they'll reach proficiency or into the second year?
It all depends, to be honest with you.
Could it be going into the third?
Yes, sometimes it goes into the third or fourth year. What I have found out is, um, since I've been here, I looked at, uh, the scores I have to report on every year. What they take an access test, which is a state assessment that they do. And it, uh, looks at their reading, um, listening, writing, and speaking skills in English. And then that will determine, help determine, along with other, um, data from their teachers, if they should exit services or not. I'll be honest with you, I've asked questions because we're having trouble up here at the high school. The kids aren't exiting. And I don't know if it's they're brand new, they're newer to the country and they haven't been familiar with the language or exposed to it, or what's going on. But we had a lot of success at the elementary level, especially fourth, fifth grade. Last year, we had fifteen kids exit. The actual service isn't going to a monitoring phase, which was great. So I commended, uh, kudos to the teachers down there, not just our ESL teachers, but our staff in general. So, yeah, they go into a monitoring phase then.
And I think it's easier for younger students to make that transition, acquire the language. Earlier, that part we know from research is that, you know, the younger you are, the easier it is to acquire a new language. The older the students are and, you know, potentially here at the high school level, uh, the longer period of time that they've been speaking a native language, the more of a challenge it is to acquire the English language, I think is, is a barrier.
Yeah, it is. It's a challenge. It definitely is. Uh, on the next page, I have the different languages that we currently speak. Our families speak and or write in, uh, this, on our communities. So there's eighteen languages, excuse me, other than English. Arabic is the second most spoken language or written language by our families, and then Spanish is second. I broke down, um, ESL by the numbers, so, um, I have them here on there, I apologize. It should be twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, I was projecting for next year, I guess. But currently, I did ask the board, we have two and a half teachers and one paraprofessional at the elementary level. I did ask because our numbers were growing down there and we're, you know, like I said, seventy-plus kids at the, sixty-nine at the elementary. Um, so the IU came and they asked us, and we actually, we used some of our grant money that we got to, uh, open that other additional, um, support down there. So we have two point five teachers. So the teachers there, uh, for a couple hours in the day, just to alleviate some of that caseload for the students. Uh, the typical class size, anywhere from ten to twelve, and that really is a lot. Um, I'm gonna break it down and show you where our students currently are regarding the proficiency levels. But at the high school, we have one and a half teachers. Uh, right now, we have a hundred and seventeen students, like I said. Eleven of them are from Crafton, they are attending Carnegie. We have ten receiving dual services, they're receiving ESL and special education services. We also have three that receive five oh four agreements. Uh, again, for various things, diabetes, seizures, could even be ADHD. Uh, forty-eight students are new to the district this year. They came in, they got assessed, thirty-eight got assessed and qualified for services. Now, we've, uh, we evaluated more than thirty-eight, but those are the ones that we found qualified for services. Ten transferred in from other districts, so let me explain that. Char Valley is another one that is very large ESL population. They have over three hundred students over there right now receiving services. We have a couple moving in from there. We don't reassess, reevaluate them if they come in and they'll let us know, just like if they would receive any other type of service. Hey, they receive ESL services. So we just, we bring them in, they let us know what, how many classes they have or how many hours, and we do it accordingly. Um, so we've had thirty-four students currently right now at the monitoring phase. So if you add a hundred and seventeen and thirty-four, that's a hundred and sixty students. And again, that are English language learners. That's a lot. That's a lot of kids for a district our size. Um, we also have two families that have opted out of services. So I broke it, yes.
Sorry to interrupt. If they opt out, that just means they choose to learn more passively and they'll?
Yes, they don't, uh, so what happens is, not many, we'll have a couple and they'll come in and say they don't wanna be in the class. They opt out, or the older kids try to do that. But we sit down with them, administration, the administration and the families sit down and sometimes, you know, the teachers and say, hey, listen, here's what you're gonna miss out on. Do you wanna, you know, do you want this or not? So, like I said, we only have two. We've had a couple, but when they realize that they're not gonna get that exposure and that direct instruction with the English, they really recognize it's not such a good idea. But again, it's a family choice, so we sit down with them and talk about that. And they do still have to take the access test. So, just because they don't get the service doesn't mean that they still learn how to navigate things. Uh, but they don't need to pass anything to graduate, if anyone's curious. It's not like they have to pass the access test in order to graduate. Um, our numbers for this school year, if you turn the next page, it's a blue bar graph. So you can see, we currently have ten kindergartners. Uh, our fourth grade class is the largest down there at the elementary level with thirteen students. You might think, oh, thirteen students, it's not that bad. Well, if you get all those thirteen students in one room that aren't speaking English very well, it can be very challenging.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, or do you try your best to scatter them out?
That's a good question. It depends on their level of proficiency. Um, I know since there are three grades, um, three classes per grade down there, they do try to scatter them out. So not just one teacher has all the English language learners. Um, so we do provide professional development for all the staff. And we are, uh, we're pretty close with Jenna and the staff down there, just to support the students. Because it is a struggle, I recognize that. Yeah, I mean, it's not like it's just impacting one grade or another. And it's not just the academics, it's, you know, the, um, uh, what's the art, musics, what do you call that? Unified arts, so it also impacts them as well. Um, I have worked very closely with our autistic and life skill support teacher, Heidi Malika down there. Um, reason being is she's used to working with students that would be limited verbally. Um, so we do a lot of picture schedules, different things, so they know in their language what they're asking for. If they're asking for help, they can, you know, or the nurse, they can point to different things so they know. So, uh, she's been really instrumental, and she's new, she's really been instrumental. Um, also, the high school, we, they are the largest grade up here, and that kind of went a lot of the way. Uh, levels of proficiency, so that's what we were talking about. So they look at listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And when they get assessed, they come in and do that as well. So you have six different levels. Um, entering in beginning, they qualify for two sessions a day. And down below, I explain a little bit more. Uh, developing and expanding, one session a day. Bridging and reaching, they either A, don't qualify for services, or they're being monitored. So, um, Dr. Honschar, your question was, if you have a student that comes in, if they're at the entering level, it's gonna take them, you know, at least two to three years, and then they would hopefully be either bridging or reaching. Um, the elementary, one session equals five hours a week or one hour a day. Two sessions is, uh, ten hours a week or two hours a day. At the junior, senior high school, it's a little different just because the way the bell schedules are up here. And it's three, um, three point seven five hours a week and, uh, seven point five hours a week in these two sessions, a double period. So, if you look at this, this is the level of proficiency over the years. Again, this was a snapshot of the students that were here during the March, whenever I looked at those, uh, those numbers. So in seventeen eighteen, again, they were still the largest part, but they were entering. All those kids were entering here. And then it jumps up. And you would hope, you would think, again, as you, and you do see, if you look over the years, those entering kids hopefully are going from, and then to emerging, and then developing the following year, and then into expanding. Um, but again, this year, it's been very challenging with the expansion, the expansion of our kindergarten. Uh, we have fifty-one students that came in at an entering level, which is really challenging. Because some don't have any exposure at all to English and it's, it's all, yeah, it's a challenge. So I've been really working closely with them down in Carnegie to support them. Can-do descriptors, I'm not gonna read through them, but do you ever say, well, what is, what is entering level mean? I put that into perspective for me. And what we did was, we provided this year, their high, our high school and elementary with a list that called them can-do. So you go, what can you do? What is this child able to do? Uh, when we get the access scores back, they leveled them. So maybe someone is, uh, doing a much better job at listening than speaking, which is okay. But we need to know kind of where they fall. But so this is an example of the grade band, uh, first and second grade. If they were at the entering level, here's some little hints that the teachers, A, have an idea of how they are doing, how they're gonna listen, how they're gonna do with speaking, and how you can speak to them. Um, so again, it's very simple, like, I'm not trying to, uh, you're not gonna, you know, throw certain words at them, but you're gonna model for them. You're gonna, um, take things, you know, one, you're gonna use nouns and verbs. You're not gonna be using full sentences necessarily when speaking to the kids. Um, very simple, lots of visuals, that is very helpful for them as well. Uh, reading, you look on the back, they talk about connecting print to visuals, matching real-life objects. Um, and with our intermediate unit, we contact with our staff and they provide the curriculum, which is good. So the district does not need to worry about purchasing curriculum. They are out, um, with everything that's brand new, anything we can supplement, we do. Uh, there's a couple of different sites that they have to go on and play games, the kids can do at home. Um, but they really try to, you know, they're on the forefront of all the stuff that, um, curriculum-wise. So that's one thing that we don't need to, need to take care of. Uh, some supports for our English language learners and families. Um, and the other thing is, they call them Ls. Um, I've seen it written a couple of different ways. I've seen the V, L, double L, I've seen a single L. They also, um, different places, different districts, uh, call, they're referring as multicultural, multi-cultural students. So that's another way you might see or hear about, uh, these, um, English language learners. So we offer professional development every year to our staff. VIU, I, um, pushed out this year and sent some invites out to the staff up at the high school. And Carnegie did welcome and invite them down to be a part of some of the professional developments, to take back, to see what they can then share with their, uh, other colleagues. Because sometimes if it starts there, you're more inclined to listen to, you know, people who are down the trenches with you than someone else saying, no, this is what you do. No, we are in the community every day. So I've had a couple people take me up on that opportunity. Um, some of the girls are involved with the Women's Empowerment Summit, and it's next week, we're gonna go to that. Uh, I started the ESL Committee, we're gonna meet next week. We're gonna have our ESL teachers and then some general education teachers and Jenna and I to go in and kind of, you know, get some ideas of what we can do moving forward now around the pandemic and bring some things back. I know they did like cultural night before, and they, um, did something down there during the day. And they did talk with Jenna, but, um, and then they helped address them, like, some of their, um, clothing, their own ethnic clothes. So they really liked that. And they wanna do more of that, so the kids feel they have a connection with their culture. And they're also very proud to show the other kids, you know, what they're, how they dress and what types of food they eat. Uh, this summer and the past two summers, we've offered summer tutoring for them. This really throws love at families because they go to Carnegie. But in the summer, that's where we house our extended school year. So we all, we have to transport them over to Crafton. So that's very challenging and very confusing to explain to families when they go to Carnegie, why they're going over to Crafton for the summer. But that's where we're doing our summer tutoring for grades K to sixth. Um, and then up at the high school, we'll do that as well. And again, it's not that they failed anything, but if I've asked the teachers to identify the students that really could benefit from that support. So hopefully, hopefully we'll have more students this year. The first year, we had three up here. Um, we opened it, we extended it to the elementary last year, and we've had three or five students coming on a consistent basis. But I would like to see more of that, so that's another added support there.
This, uh, the Afghan refugee grant, is that just for the school year?
Yes, that's a great question. Yep.
And the Ukrainian grant will come soon, I assume?
Fingers crossed, yes. I keep hearing that, and Dr. Kreider and I, we were saying, have you heard yet? No, we've not heard anything about that yet.
So you expect grants for next year?
Yes, there, that's the thing, is that we don't get any additional funds, um, necessarily. It's based upon, um, you, there, uh, our PIMS reporting, which we do a really good job at. Um, and Kim Cales is actually our, uh, PIMS coordinator here, so I work close with Kim every day. And, uh, it's code certain ways, certain things pop, immigration, immigrants and whatnot, you can get, you have to have X amount of students and you can get extra funds. But, um, we are, we have six, seven students, it should be from, that are Afghan refugees. So us and three other districts in the Allegheny, Cali, who got the money. So we're using that for the teacher and some other different, some summer tutoring that we're gonna use. Um, we did Welcome Back Night for English language learners last year, we look to do that again this year. That was a really nice turnout, I was really impressed. We had probably over fifty, fifty people show up. Um, and then we wanted to do Cultural Night at some point in the fall. Like I said, Jen and I and the community are gonna sit down and talk about that. But it's really nice because a lot of them, a lot of the families live locally. They can just walk over to Carnegie, a little more challenging to get up here, they don't have transportation at the high school. So I always keep that back in my, in the back of my head. Hello neighbors tutoring for the students. Uh, they also offer literacy Pittsburgh English classes. They offer them at Carnegie Elementary and Carnegie Library on Saturdays and a couple other days, I believe.
Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday, thank you for that. So it's nice because they offer it at their door in the day, or at the elementary, they offer it in the evening. So some of the working parents can, can go. Uh, the last but not least would be communication with families. Uh, this is one of my areas that I am trying to, uh, it's one of my, uh, goals is to strengthen and enhance communication with the families. We do have remote interpreters, so someone comes in, they're trying to register, we call in, we get someone over the phone. Um, in person as well, that's really helpful for IP meetings or just the meeting in general, having them at the table and understanding what's going on. Uh, we also do, uh, work, um, they have AI translation we have, kids use their phones or teachers do, um, use that. We also have translation services, so, um, I knew our PT at Carnegie reached out, they wanted to send some stuff home. They reached out to Megan and, and I, and we did that set up and sent away, so we get that translated into the languages. And we're very well organized, I can hit, Megan's here as well, um, Megan. So she is a parent in the district as well, but she is very organized and we know exactly what languages we need for what buildings and what grade levels. Uh, our website is also, um, you can go in and change it in any language that they want, so we let them know that. And then we are working on talking points for district communicate, district-wide communication, I should say. Uh, Josh Jones is working on that, so that way it's just kind of like a robo-call, where they can send out a quick text or whatever you need to do for all of the staff. Some of the staff use talking points, but not calling do, so we got that up in front of it, I've been running right now. It should take them a little while for it to integrate, the system's not as easy as we thought it was gonna be. That is that, Keith, I was about under three minutes, so, yeah.
I really commend you. It's, it's a challenge, but it's, you're taking on the challenge, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Plus our teachers, almost teachers that are, uh, have these extra kids, thank you.
You're welcome. It's, it's challenging, we're good through, we're together, and what you do, you know?
And it's working.
It's working.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Questions, comments?
And I'm just curious, because I think that, um, you know, there are certainly challenges associated with a lot of different languages. Oh, it's fine, thank you. Um, thank you. A lot of different languages in the district and the classroom, but there's also a lot of assets that come along with having such a diverse student body. And, um, are there ways that we can do a better job of making sure that all residents of Crafton and Carnegie and Roslin Farms recognize how much of an asset it is to have such a diverse student body here? And how we can make sure that our students feel really comfortable in our districts, our community, our buildings, and have the support to be?
That's a great question, and that's what I would like to work, dive, dive, dive deeper into. Is, um, I went over to, I got invited to go over to Char Valley, they had a big open house, it was like community over there, and it was amazing. They had all these different, they had dance teams, they had, you know, this one singing over here. But it was a real nice cultural, um, experience. And they had, um, one culture club set up and just, because they're, they're really diverse there as well. They had over three hundred students. Um, so I am talking and networking with other districts to see, hey, how can we collaborate? What can we do? What are you doing that we could be doing differently? I know one of the things that, um, you know, that they do is, um, some of their families, like I said, we're, a lot of them are right across, um, from the, the elementary. Um, they're transporting into some, to some of the different things, because that is a barrier. Some families don't have transportation, and if you can't read the language, if you can't read English, you ain't got a license. And unfortunately, there's a bus line that runs up here. So, um, yeah, no, I think just getting out, getting the people exposed to it, and having the kids get excited too. Um, I know one of the teachers down at Carnegie, Mary Campbell, does an incredible job. She always features, um, something of what's going on with the students, the different nationalities. And she puts the books out, and not that our library doesn't, but she just, it's really nice if you even walk down and, and that. But yeah, no, I, I looked at getting parents more involved and hearing from their side and perspective of what's, what they need as well from us, so.
Well, I think too about how excited my first grader was when she came home after the musical, came and visited Crafton Elementary. So is there a way too that we can get the kids over at Crafton really excited for the opportunities that exist within our district? And the kids who will be in the high school with them who are currently over at Carnegie?
Yeah, that's a great point, I would love to, because they're not exposed to any kids really, unless they're in their neighborhood, but then they're going to school over in Carnegie. Um, so, yeah, I, like I said, I definitely would dive deeper into that and find out what, from the student's perspective, from the community's perspective, where, where the gaps are and how to, to work together on, 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 that should, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. So we have for administrative reports tonight? Looking at committee reports, uh, Dr. Apple, anything you wanna share about Parkway West?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we had a meeting on the seventh, and talked about a few things. Um, most notably though, I'll, I'll, uh, talk about the student satisfaction survey that they've done. In the midst of doing surveys of all the stakeholders, um, districts, with the students, you know, industry partners, things like that. So we have the, uh, the results for the students, and it's, um, it's, it's, it's pretty positive, well, overwhelmingly positive. Um, just the top line is ninety-four percent of the students are satisfied with the quality of education at Parkway. Ninety-nine percent of them feel their instructors have thorough knowledge of the content. Uh, kids feel safe there. They, um, you see that there's ninety-six percent of students feel Parkway provides life opportunities. And, um, interestingly, um, eighty-four percent of them attend Parkway because they understand, uh, the jobs that they're being trained for in demand. So that tells me that there's another group of kids that go there for another reason, which is interesting to me. It's not good or bad, it's just, um, I think, I think it's probably best illustrated in that, uh, it's hard to say there's a typical Parkway student. A lot of them end up graduating high school and going on to a four-year college as well. So it's not just, you know, I'm gonna go there and learn a trade and go to work. And even, even those folks do that. Um, there's continuing education and things like that throughout their careers, because they're much more technically demanding than they were in the past. Um, and one of the other items I'll mention is that the, um, the bricklayers and masons, uh, we're restarting the, the mason, masonry program out there. And the, uh, union is building at no cost to the member districts, a one million dollar, three thousand square foot, uh, facility that'll be ready for when the, the program restarts in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that's, it's pretty big of the epic. That's, that's all.
Joe, who's building this?
Oh, you mean the contractor?
This, uh, this facility.
Oh, the, the bricklayers and masons are.
Great, okay.
I don't know who's actually doing the, the actual work.
Plus our kids that, that are studying electricity and so forth?
I don't think so.
Probably.
I, I think that, uh, I think with this one, it's gonna be.
One sec.
I think, um, yeah, it's, it's being built. It's being built by.
That's.
Yeah, it's being contracted out.
Yeah, it's, that's a wonderful school.
Yeah, and, and the nice thing about it is, the, um, the, uh, you know, one of the big sticking points in negotiations were, you know, what if this doesn't work out? And the masons, well, we'd like to be able to use that building, and we're like, no, I don't think that's a good idea. You guys have a facility on our property. Um, we ended up coming to an agreement, it, uh, it's gonna work out well for both, I think.
Dr. Honschar, Pathfinder, any updates?
Pathfinder report, uh, we're at, uh, right around eighty-nine kids. Uh, we had one that left the Pathfinder school, but then another came in, so we're, we're at eighty-nine. We've had some real problems with the Hy-Vac system right now. So Carleton was assessed at seven percent of the consortium, seven percent of the students in the, uh, the consortium, we were, uh, assessed, uh, eight thousand dollars, which passed last year. And, um, they asked me to thank the board for, uh, providing that money. Um, our audit is about one month late, but we're getting the highest rating. Uh, a good, uh, surprise was Dr. Palmiero, he's the Assistant Director of Special Education. Um, he told us that the AIU was involved in a, uh, suit. And they were awarded a million and a half dollars. And since Mon Valley and Sunrise and Pathfinder buildings are about the same age, and they're falling, not falling apart, but they're aging, they're all aging and they need their repairs. The Pathfinder will be receiving, uh, half a million dollars, uh, to help in this upgrading process. So, so that's, that was a wonderful surprise. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Zlowski, any updates?
I actually do this time.
Awesome.
Two of them. Um, the Shazda meeting will be held on Thursday, March thirtieth, at Upper St. Crafton School with guest speaker, Dr. Richa, um, who's an Associate Adjunct Professor at, um, Dr. Kreider, you said you will be at that?
Yes.
Event, and myself and Jessica will be in attendance as well. And then the Shazda, excuse me, Shazda Student Conference will be held on Saturday, April twenty-second. And that's at the Hilton Garden Inn, and we'll, we'll have two nominees to go to.
Yes, yeah, and we'll be able to announce those at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, Legislative PSBA, Director Simpson?
I'm going to disappoint tonight. Um, foundation, well, I'll, I'll skip over to foundations and our last meeting was canceled. Um, apparently they couldn't handle having both Wendy and I talk to each other. So that, I don't have anything to report for that. And I just, I don't really have anything for legislative tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions about any reports superintendent or committee? If not, we can move on. Under section four of our agenda, we have four different items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one. The additions to the list for conferences for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Number two, to allow Allegheny Health Network's field project to administer voluntary surveys in accordance with the school board policy number two, three, five dot one. Surveys to students and staff members who interact with the program. Number three, uh, two and a half hour delay start for students in grades K to twelve and nine to twelve. Sorry, K to two and nine to twelve. Sorry about that. On April twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth and May first and second, twenty-twenty-three, to administer the PSSA tests to students in grades three through eight. And then, uh, number four, to approve the use of a flexible instruction day at Crafton Elementary School on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, if necessary, due to the temporary unsafe conditions created by the school by having an election of the school. That was worrying, I was. If necessary, due to the temporary unsafe conditions created in the school to facilitate the primary election. There we go. Sorry about that. Um, any questions or comments about my ability to speak? On agenda item number four.
I, I do have a question about the delays. Um, I need to get back on immigrant cases.
We need to have, make a motion.
Oh, I see.
That's okay. Yeah. Still moved.
Second.
Okay, now.
How do the parents know about the change in the bus schedule? Cause that seems to have been a problem.
That's a great question. First of all, we've got the letters translated in the languages that are necessary for the students.
It comes through the postal service.
Yeah. And then we're also going to ask our ESL teachers to contact the families as well. So they're also aware. A lot of them, like I said, they already have the talking points that they use for free. So yes.
Yeah, great. So we have all of our bases covered.
We do. Yeah. And we'll push it out. We'll push it out, e-blast, um, put it on Facebook, put it on Twitter as well.
Great, great, great.
Any other questions or comments on the motion on the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. All right. Under section five, we also have four items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the bill from February twenty-fourth through March tenth, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of one point, one million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Number two, the following reports as reflected in the March twenty-twenty-three financial reports packet. The treasures report, the investment report, the board summary report, the athletic fund report, and the junior senior high school activities fund report, all from February twenty-twenty-three. Um, number three, the donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from the mentoring partnership of Southwestern PA for Wes Maxwell's all-peer nomination. And number four, the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four Allegheny Intermediate Unit Program of Services budget in the amount of two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. The AIU three school district's total contribution to the budget is one million, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, twenty-six dollars. The Carlington School District contribution to the program services budget is estimated to be twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and will be determined by PE according to the district aid ratio and weighted average daily membership. So we have four items under section five, got a motion for those items.
Some, second.
Moving second. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Under section six personnel, there's one item. I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel agenda as submitted. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Just a quick comment. Uh, one individual in there for retirement, Mark Priori. Mark's been with us for several years as a music teacher at Crafton Elementary School and has decided to retire. So he has up until May first to retract that. But we wish him well in his retirement. Also Kimberly Cale is, is on there as a resignation as our cheerleading coach. Kimberly has, has served in that capacity for several years, has done an outstanding job. I know Garnes, the, in respect of the girls and runs a really nice program. Kimberly's still going to be with us in the registrar office. She has not resigned from that. Um, and she does an outstanding job for us there as well.
So we'll celebrate if retirement's occurring at the time and we'll lament the loss of. The girls set a high bar and once they're graduating, you, you can't do it anymore. Cool. Any other questions or comments? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Under student activities, we do have a student activity item. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the list of field trips for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as submitted. Got a motion?
Seven, second.
Moving second. Thanks. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Moving on to old business. Any director of any old business that'd like to report? New business. Any director of any new business? None. Open forum. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about anything to the board? Seeing nothing, we'll move back to the board. Any open forum items from board members?
I'd just like to comment that, um, as we mentioned, I'm really, uh, I'm impressed with the new windows at Crafton Elementary. How that's turning out and, um, excited to see the schools. Moving on and on. It's, 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 you know, I can, I drive by and I look and I see just how clear those windows are compared to the old ones. And it's like, wow. So, I agree. I agree.
Was there a last minute open forum question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Nadia.
Yes, and my name is Elijah.
Okay.
We want to talk about the class averages.
Okay.
Yes. Um, I feel like some of the teachers, um, teaching methods aren't working.
They're ineffective and the class average of, um, some of the classes are below.
Like below fifty.
Okay.
Yes.
And I know on a recycling basis, I know the high school administration meets with a core group of individuals to go through and review academic performance, um, across the board for all classes to, to take a look at those things and then work with either tier one, tier two, or tier three types of interventions. Which basically just means what types of levels of support that we can provide the kids to help them be more successful in the classroom. So there are a number of students not experiencing success in a classroom, but I know that the high school, uh, administration is dedicated to putting some, some plans in place to help experience more, uh, more success. One of the things that I am going to do in the next coming couple of weeks is to meet with student focus groups. And so maybe I'll add you two to the list. Just to collect a little bit more information, we talked about this before, uh, just with our, our climate survey. We took the climate survey, which was in school, like fifty-some questions that you mentioned. Um, really just to dig down and to address, uh, some of your questions and concerns, just to try to find out a little bit more information on what's taking place and, and what we can do better as a, as an organization to, to help.
Yes. I feel like the teachers, like when we edit that extra period, like it's like, okay, like for example, like we'll, we'll study something as it works and then we'll take a test on it. And then like almost half the kids fail the test and we have to keep going because they get behind in like the, the school curriculum.
Okay. It's good feedback. Um, I know Dr. Manish is here as well. He works with, directly with the, the curriculum and pacing and sequencing and how fast we, we go through topics and get it covered in the time periods that we, that we have. And if those are things that we need to revisit with either different types of strategies, pre-teaching, re-teaching, different types of, of approaches and resources that we can give the kids to help them be more successful. Those are things we can definitely take a look at.
I appreciate the way you're approaching it in a, uh, specific way, but in a generic way that is appropriate and professional. So thank you for your approach there. What I would ask is, can you comment without being too specific about, does this dynamic that you're seeing appear to be isolated? So it's not an across the board dynamic with all classes, but there are certain classes that appear to have this dynamic that you're, you're observing?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's helpful to understand. Thank you. And I, I would agree with Dr. Kreider. I would love to see that student focus group. And maybe we can even accelerate since there's two people willing to share their opinions now. We appreciate you speaking up and, and sharing your thoughts. Maybe we can accelerate that work. I know there's a lot on your plate.
I, well, I met with Dr. Suri today to help identify some groups of students to, to meet with. And that's looking at grades three through twelve.
Wonderful.
To meet.
Would you be, both of you be willing to, to do that?
Yes.
Is, is it something that can be done at the end of the school day or what kind of flexibility do you have around?
We can operate. So it would be like.
We were going to do it, yeah, during the school day.
Okay.
During lunchtime or that kind of stuff. But we can.
Okay.
Awesome. As a last question, do you identify with the information that Dr. Apple was sharing? Director Apple, Director Apple was sharing that there seems to be a lot of student engagement at Parkway and the kids really seem to like the programs and the teachers are good. Would you affirm that from your perspective, you're seeing the same thing? You are enjoying the work there?
Um, so I enjoy like, I'm obviously going there for something that I like to do. But, um, at the same time, there are challenges that I face like there. I feel like the teacher that teaches me, um, the way she is about certain situations is, um, very extreme. And she kind of like, yeah, she's very like, I don't know, that's what I'm saying. She's kind of, um, mean.
Without getting too much because the part we, we have to be very cautious with is just identifying individuals that I think what, what you and I can do is at least have a, you can share a lot more information with me in private than you can here in a public forum. And I know that's, that's probably what's grabbing you here. So, um, you and I can definitely follow up and we, we can speak more openly about it.
Again, thank you for being tactful. That's, uh, an important trait. So thank you. But being honest and, and sharing your opinions is, thanks. Any other open forum topics or questions or comments? If not, board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? We are adjourned.